Okay, it's seven o'clock, so I'm gonna call us to order. Before we get started, I just wanted to have all of the school committee members introduce ourselves quickly for members of the public who are here. So when I call your name, if you could just say a quick hello, Michelle?
Hello, Michelle Eyre, how is everybody?
Jen?
Hello, it's Jen Benham.
Ness?
Hi, Ness Correnti here.
Carlos?
Carlos da Silva here.
And Libby?
I'm here, hi.
And Liza O'Reilly will be joining us in five or 10 minutes. So, this meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to an order issued by the Governor of Massachusetts dated March 12th, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You're hereby advised, this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify me at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that I may inform all other participants of said recording. I see that Harbor Media is here and recording, is anyone else planning to record the meeting? If yes, if you could go to the bottom of the screen and click on Participants, and then when the list pops up, the raise hand function at the bottom there, I'll just give it a minute. Okay, seeing none. 2.1 is the minutes of the school committee meeting held on October 19th, 2020.
I move that approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on October 19th, 2020.
Thank you, Carlos. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
I'm good.
Okay, seeing none, we will do roll call vote. Michelle?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Ness? Did we lose her? Ness?
She's still on here.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay, Carlos?
Aye.
Libby?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Item number three is questions and comments. The Hingham School Committee encourages community engagement and welcomes questions and comments as agenda items are discussed at the meeting. In addition, we have set aside up to 15 minutes at the beginning of the meeting for comments and questions that fall under the purview of the school committee and are not already on tonight's agenda. If any guests wish to speak, please click on the Participants button at the bottom of the screen, and when the list pops up, click on the raise hand function at the bottom right. And please state your name and address and address your comments to the chairperson. Comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker and must relate to topics within the scope of responsibility of the school committee. As established by the Massachusetts General Laws, the responsibility of the school committee are to: One, select and terminate the superintendent; Two, review and approve budgets for public education in the district; and Three, establish educational goals and policies for the schools in the district. Speakers are encouraged to present their remarks in a respectful manner and to consider the privacy interests of others. The public comment period is not a time for debate or response by members of the school committee. The school committee is not adopting or endorsing any of the comments made during the public comment period. So with all of that being said, if anyone would like to make a comment, if you could click on the Participants button at the bottom and then the raise hand function at the far right at the bottom of the list, and I will give it a minute to see. Okay, I'm not seeing anything. So next up is item four, the Superintendent's Report. 4.1 is the COVID-19 update. Dr. Austin?
Nobody yelled, you're on mute, I'm sorry, I put myself on there, thank you. Just good evening and thank you, gentlemen, for giving us opportunity and welcome everyone tonight to another school committee meeting that are very important these days, no question. Thank you for coming. If you could indulge me just for a moment, to the chair, to allow me to make a brief statement really quickly about some current events that I think are important to recognize. And so, just quickly, as residents of Hingham, many of you received a public health alert tonight that follows the governor's announcement today of significant restrictions, which underscore just how serious this public health threat is. As a community, we have to understand and respect that threat and the restrictions in place to mitigate it. I know parents are anxious to have their children back in school, and I know staff are concerned for their health and for the health of their students. These are hard times, folks. We are doing, as a district, the best we can to deliver instruction and keep the community safe. This is not easy, and there are no simple answers. Hingham has been in the red for the last three weeks, and that's scary. It's scary for our teachers, for our children, and for families. To date, we have been able to stay in the hybrid model because our public health team has found that transmissions are happening outside of the school buildings. But I want to caution everyone, caution everyone, that these conditions can change quickly, and we need to be diligent, sorry. We are still digesting the information we received from the governor and from DSE today, and we will communicate any changes we feel need to be made to the non-from-anywhere model that we are in now. I want to reiterate what I've said many times, that the health and safety of all of our staff and students continues to be our number one priority. And thank you for allowing me just at this moment to talk about that. So, what I do have on the agenda, as I do once a month, or I have done typically once a month, just give you an update on the metrics that we have right now. We are continuing to improve and put more data on our metrics to provide transparency to the community. These are on our website. We work in collaboration with Department of Public Health in making these available to people. So I have a quick PowerPoint, very quick, three pages, just to explain it really quickly. So the first part of this is, again, we've been tracking since 9/2, since September 2nd, when the district was in the gray or unshaded area, or the shaded area, where we had 0.9 transmissions per, or COVID cases per 100,000 population. That grew two weeks later, when we started school, to the yellow zone, where we end up with 7.2 for the first week of 9/16 of 2020. And that lasted for four weeks, and then on 10/14 was the first week we went to the red. On 10/14, we went to 9.9, which has grown from 11.7 to 12.3 per 100,000 cases, and that's all of Hingham. So it's not just our public schools, but this is all of Hingham and all the populations that we have here. Something that I've added to this chart is our, and you hear about the percent positivity test rate, which is an important number. And so I added this to our chart, we've gone back to the beginning and looked at the typical test results that we have for the town of Hingham only. This is Hingham data, so this is anyone who's tested in Hingham. And you see in the very beginning of 9/2, there was very little of 0.37 test positive. And over the time, it's gone up to on 9/16, went up to 2.15, back down to 1% or just over 1% on 9/30, and now climbed back up to 2.18% on 10/21, and then slightly down this week to 2.12. This metric that is 2% of the tests, or 2.12% of the tests taken by Hingham individuals are ending in positive results for COVID. So these are important data points for us to consider moving forward. Again, we we look now at the cumulative rate for us, so if you look on, we started looking at the number of cases we have as a district. And so the, started at 9/16, when we came into the hybrid model, or we started bringing students into school. For the first two weeks, we had zero cases. We moved on 9/27 to 10/3, we had three. And then we had six more to make it nine total on 10/4 to 10/10. That moved to 13, so four more on 10/11 to six more, 10/18 to 10/24, to 19 total. And last week, we had one case for the entire district, which moves us to 20, so we had one case last week. And the bottom chart is our, this is our positive test cases. So again, we look at the number of cases week to week in a different graph, so you can see how the schools are broken out. The high school is green on top, the middle school blue, and then gray for the pre-K to 5. And as you can see, this last week went down to the 1 and 10/25 through 10/31. That week is one case at the high school level. This is also, this is our weekly quarantine report, this is also a new report we're putting out. So we track the number of students or staff that are on quarantine due to a close contact, and it's not necessarily from in school. In fact, all the close contacts have come from out of school and not in. But for the last, as you can see, when we started on 9/27, which is when we first started tracking, that number increased to about 120, I think it was 122 cases on the week of 10/11 through 10/17, with 50 of those being at the high school level, and then that drops off as we go down to the elementary. Interesting, the very, the small gray part of the bottom is staff, which is also in a line item on the bottom, which for staff itself, in quarantine, the first week we had one, there was two on 10/4 through 10/10, 10/11 through 10/17 is three, then back down to two on 10/8 through 10/24, and then last week, two as well. And then the trend of the last three weeks is actually, or last two weeks, has been a decreasing number of students in quarantine. Many of you aware that, you've heard of the sports programs outside of schools that many of our students who participate in has been a pretty serious culprit for a lot of these either quarantine cases. So that's where a good number of those came from. But anyway, the trend is good with that, the trend of, you know, we had fewer cases last week, we had the one case, plus the quarantine is down. And I will caution every, it's one week of data or two weeks of data at best. And so we will continue to monitor those very closely. But it's certainly a better trend than what we've seen. I think the real trick is going to be now, be very transparent and clear with the community with Halloween, it's just occurred. We're going to be watching the next few weeks, and then of course, Thanksgiving, and then the winter holidays coming after that. I can't stress enough to our families and to our whole community to heed the warnings of the governor, of DSE, of the town, to take this very seriously, to limit the amount of time that you're with others. And I know this is hard. You know, we had family coming that were supposed to come for Thanksgiving, aren't coming. We get that, we all understand it. But these are the sacrifices that I know that are important for all of us. We want to keep people healthy and safe, and obviously, we want to have children in school to the extent possible during this time. But to do that, it's going to take all of an incredible effort to move us forward, so. Thank you for that, and that's the end of, I'll do a fairly short PowerPoint.
Thank you for Dr. Austin, and just to be clear, it's on the website, the Hingham Public Schools website? So if anyone wants to take a look, they can see it. Does anyone on the committee have any questions on this? Michelle?
Sorry, thanks, I can't raise my hand because I'm co-host. Just a quick question, I don't know if you'd actually, if anyone had done this, but I'm just curious, Dr. Austin, if you know, if, because I know there is, you know, a lot of folks trying to consider what it would look like if we were at three feet, but given those numbers of people, community members quarantined at six feet, which, at six feet, you wouldn't have the close contact, so you would have less people having to quarantine. Has anybody run like a model to see like what that might have looked like if we had been at three feet?
Yeah.
I was just curious, like, is it exponentially, is it 200 more people, or is it, you know, 500 people?
Right, well, it is, in essence, you know, I haven't run a model on that, but if you think about the way that a classroom is set up, with six foot spacing, you're absolutely right, if we've had a positive case, we have not had to quarantine other members. Now that said, if we're at three feet, you now have four people around you potentially that would have to go with you. So that number multiplies by four. And I would also say the CDC has changed the rules, where it was 15 minutes of close contact within that six feet for 15 minutes for extended time. Now it's cumulative over 24 hours. And so we're still kind of waiting to see how that plays out with us, to see how much that changes anything. And so far for the school, we haven't seen anything that's been changed because of that. But I would anticipate that could, that could make a major change in what we do. And so, yeah, I mean, that's one of the dangers, that's one of the risks that we have if we were to bring more students in, particularly at the older levels, you know, as students get larger, and it's much more compact. And so that's very problematic, where we're going to multiply this four, five, six times out, you know, and potentially even more than that. We don't want to get to a point, what we don't want is we don't want such a cluster of people that we end up shutting an entire school down because of that. And that's really what you see, if you look around us, the school districts that are shutting down, it's because we have those clusters, a lot of that are in clusters within certain classrooms. Those close contacts are exactly what's, I think are a good reason why people are having to go for remote for a couple of weeks until the clusters go away. I would also say, you know, I think, you know, there is an incredible amount of data that, you know, looks at where the COVID cases are coming from. I also wanted people to be, and I don't have a report prepared for that, some of that is DPH's data, so it wouldn't be right for me to report they data, but you know, there's an incredible amount of data out there about where cases are. And I think that's important when we're thinking about, particularly, I know there's some questions about, well, why are we, if we're red, why aren't we, why aren't we remote, why are we still in school? And part of that was because there was no transmission, you know, within the schools has not been the area where we've seen a lot of transmission. In fact, all the cases that come to us have come to us from an outside organization for the most part. So I think that's something we're watching very closely. We'll continue to mine this data down and to look at our metrics every week. I have two different groups that we meet with. One is the COVID Response Team, that the team has, which has DPH, it has our school nurses, it has our administrators, it has member in the HEA on it, and our school physician on that, and also belong now to the to the Incident Command for the town, the COVID Response Team for the town, which is another group of folks that I work with, this is public safety, DPH, town administration, looking at these numbers very, very closely, particularly as we're in the red now, and making some difficult decisions or recommendations for how to move forward or not.
Yeah, thank you. Does anyone else on the committee have any questions about this? I would just like to say that it's looking like the protocols that everyone worked so hard on and put in place seem to be holding up, knock on wood. So that's, it's nice to see that the number's trending down for once, that's encouraging. So members of the public, if you have any questions about this agenda item, if you, again, if you go click on Participants at the bottom of the screen, and then when the list pops up, the lower right-hand corner, it says raise hand. And I see Chrissy O'Connor has her hand raised right now.
Hi, Carrie, thank you. So Chrissy O'Connor for Elizabeth Lane. Thank you, Dr. Austin, for that update. I hear you say several times, and this comes out with every message that any of the principals send out about an update on a positive case in schools as well, there's sort of this refrain that transmissions are happening outside of school buildings, there's no transmission in schools, we're getting, you know, these are happening with, from outside organizations. I guess my question is, is there any plan for testing? Because I think one thing that concerns me, as, I will also share that I'm a high school teacher. So one thing that concerns me is that there is no testing for teachers or students. And so, given that, as you also mentioned, that close contacts are defined as somebody who's been within six feet for 15 minutes. And, you know, at first that was like a solid 15 minutes, and now it's like a cumulative 15 minutes. But because our spacing is six feet, nobody in school will ever be considered a close contact. So I guess one of the things I struggle with is, how can we be so sure that there is no transmission happening in schools when we don't have any testing protocol in place whatsoever? And it may be that, you know, as Carrie just said, that our protocols are good, but we don't know that, we don't have testing to back it. So I, my question is, is there any plan for, for testing at all that you know of? Especially since we're a community that has now been in the red for three weeks, and my phone is, as everyone else's tonight, was, you know, greeted with these warnings from the state. Thank you.
Thank you, Chrissy, I appreciate it, nice to see you, by the way. And, you know, a couple of thoughts on that. One, when I say there's no transmission, what we're looking at, what the data I'm getting from the DPH, is of course, they're doing their contact tracing. And our nurses have helped some with that, so we identify kids that are near them. And so they've done a really thorough job, not nurses, but DPH's done an incredibly thorough job of the contact tracing, people do get tested, right, and so, or they're quarantined. So, you know, so the information, when I say there's no transmission, there's no evidence of that. And can I be 100% sure? I don't think anybody can, right? I can just tell you, that's the information we have that hasn't been from a positive case that we've had that has somehow spread to anybody else in the school setting that we're aware of. That's one. Two, I don't know if you're aware of, you've probably heard the information that the Commonwealth has, or is in the process of getting 2 million fast test kits. These are the rapid test kits that they are going to potentially use in schools. I did, to be fully transparent, I did, you had to sign up on an email if you were interested in that, and I did that. I am absolutely all for that, if we can find a way to test our teachers. And our, testing students is another, I don't want to go there. But certainly our teachers. And the, so we are potentially on that list, I know there's some more information that I need on that, and looking how that would happen and how that would get rolled out. But that's not anything new either, because I've been talking with Susarni from the Hingham Department of Public Health to talk about ways that we could possibly bring either random testing, pool testing, some sort of testing program and protocol to our school system. And I do think that's important, I think it's going to be important. Thanks for the question.
Great, thank you. I see Eileen has her hand up. If you could state your full name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Eileen Bevins, 8 Plymouth River Road. I know you mentioned that there was evidence of coronavirus via sports. Are there any other places where you're seeing it outside of school?
Yeah, I mean, there's a few, I would say the majority, and I don't, Eileen, thank you for the, number one, thank you for the question. I don't have the percentage that I have, I would just say the vast majority came from one particular, and that was the hockey that you saw the governor actually shut down for several weeks in the Commonwealth because it was such spread. And so that became a real problem. That's where the majority of things have been, either adults to that, or certainly younger people. But that doesn't mean that there hasn't been, I mean, there's been a periodic case here and there, other two, other things that are associated with either a family member or something like that on the outside. So it's not all just sports at all, but that's the vast majority. Thank you.
Thank you, and just a quick follow-up, do you see any cases coming from outside pods?
I'm not aware of any, but that would be a Susarni question, because I wouldn't get that data. I mean, there's overall Hingham data, if you look at all the overall Hingham data, it's certainly not all just public schools, it includes all 0 to 80-plus, so age. So I'm sure that, I don't know if Susarni could tell you that information, but certainly that would be information she would have, and I wouldn't.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see any other hands up, so item 4.2 is SLSURE Educational Collaborative Update.
Thank you, just quickly, that was in your package tonight. Just a quick update from SLSURE, it's been a little while, as we met with the board recently. Just quickly, the Budget Prediction Sheet and Program Enrollment for the Board of Directors meeting of October 19, or October 9, 2020 is attached for you. The enrollment projections and budget projections for the fiscal year in line with the projected budget, and the financial projection for FY21, in the case it will be a positive financial balance at the close of the school year, it's all good news with that. The Director of Student Services has provided an update on learning plans. The plan is for typical classroom instruction to be in-person, with the option of hybrid and remote being afforded to families. Therapies were delivered in person over the summer, and staff have been training how to use the PPE that they have in stock. And then finally, a reopening report, as the Board meeting date, SSEC, I had 73% of students attending in-person, 10% were attending using a hybrid model, and the remaining 17% were attending fully remotely. And under the COVID circumstances, they consider they've had a fairly smooth opening. So that's good news for SLSURE, and that data is in your pack.
Great, thank you. Does anyone have any questions on that? Okay, seeing none. Next is 4.3, the Proposed Budget Calendar.
Thank you, and I'll ask John Ferris to chime in on this one with me. But as you know, my policy, it's, you, the Board directs, or the School Committee directs me every year to develop a budget calendar for consideration of the budget, and that is done with, out of the business office. And so, Mr. Ferris and I have been working on this for a couple of weeks now, and you have your first read. John, do you want to, you want to talk about it briefly? Oh, we can't hear you, John.
How about that, is that any better?
There you go, that's good, John, thank you.
Okay, had to get things turned on. Yes, so the budget calendar, very similar to previous years. This one has just a few steps that have been sort of suspended or not put in play, but basically covers all of the same areas. We will have a couple of meetings with the, as opposed to sending out all information to all the administrators and the directors and stuff, and have them submit a budget for next year. Sort of due to the lack of visibility, we sort of suspended that activity. So instead, we have a couple of meetings that are scheduled for November 13th and November 19th, when the senior leadership team, as well as, you know, the principals and the directors will be getting together so that we can hear their budget concerns, and, you know, what types of initiatives or things that they feel would be absolutely necessary for the next year. So that's really about the only thing that we're replacing. In the schedule that you see, you'll see, you know, a number of meetings, a couple of which have already been scheduled for Capitals and Facilities Subcommittee meeting, where we'll work to get our capital budget in order. Timeframes very, very similar to previous years. We have a Finance Subcommittee meeting, which will be a new meeting this year, and we'll probably have a couple of those before we present the first time, you know, a budget to the overall school committee, whole school committee, on January 7th, which would be that first, is it January 7th or January 5th? Excuse me one second. Yeah, January 7th will be that first Thursday right after the new year. And then we'll go for, you know, two successive Thursdays, you know, having similar workshops where we describe the budget to the school committee in more detail. We have the fourth successive Thursday reserved in case we should need that budget. I'm anticipating, we don't know dates yet, you know, when Capital Outlay will have their meeting, where Capital and Facilities Subcommittee will meet with Capital Outlay and present the school capital for FY22. Prior to that, we will address capital with the school committee at one of the workshops, or one of the regular school committee meetings that occur during that period of time. By and large, this schedule looks very similar to previous years. I'm still, the warrant deadline, I presume will still stay the 20th, January 20th, where we'll have to think about any warrant items we would want to submit. And we will have like meetings once ACIS gets formulated and they start their work on the budgets, and, you know, when they want to meet with us, we'll probably insert, you know, those meeting dates into the existing calendar. I have a TBD date on here to sort of meet with the overall advisory committee sometime after we start developing the budget and presented the budget. And presuming that the And um, presuming that um, the school committee would have a public hearing on or about February eighth. Um, perhaps take a tentative budget vote somewhere around February twenty-second. Uh, you know, it's which time early, late February, early March, I would anticipate that the um, Board of Selectmen and the Advisory um, committee will, will have their hearings and they will vote. And um, you know, targeting, uh, getting a budget number for a town meeting that is um, expected to occur on April twenty-sixth. Um, followed by a town election on May first. So by and large, the budget, the calendar looks very, very similar to previous years. You know, and we can always add more dates in there as we get more visibility on how that might go, um, you know, with the town's um, calendar.
John, uh, and, and with that uh, document, you also have the guiding principles um, draft that we have, and everything is draft formed tonight, so you can do this as a first read uh, for all of you, and then we'll put it on as an action item for the next school committee meeting, so you can adopt it. Uh, hopefully, or, and give us any uh, feedback between now and then uh, would be great. But the guiding principles, um, and I'll just go over that briefly with you. It's included in your packet. Um, and, and one thing I'd want to say to the community and to all of you that, you know, obviously due to the COVID nineteen and the lack of visibility um, for the FY twenty-two budget, which is the one we'll be working on. Now, the FY twenty-twenty-two budget process will be somewhat truncated, and, and John just talked about that, but it looked fairly similar, but there's a couple of meetings uh, that we took out of that. Um, we can add back if we need to. Um, and the proposed budget will be developed using the assumption of a status quo budget with several key initiatives added that we believe are essential uh, for meeting the needs of our students and school community. With the basic uh, premise that Hangum will maintain its focus on providing the highest quality education for all Hangum students following parameters and presumptions we use in the development of the FY twenty-two budget. A, the budget will presume a continuation of enrollment from the March one, twenty twenty enrollment, so last March. Rolling back, we do anticipate that our enrollment will go back up uh, to what it was in March of twenty twenty, so we're gonna make that assumption in the budget development. The budget will presume a continuation of all FTEs approved in the FY twenty-one budget. All personnel salaries will be stepped up according to terms specifying the appropriate collective bargaining agreements or individual contracts. And where the collective bargaining agreements have not yet completed as the budget process begins, an allowance will be provided for two years uh, to address that. The adopted budget with the school committee hopefully will provide for services and supports, which is the HTSS necessary to remediate the loss of instructional progress resulting from COVID nineteen. It's to fund the process and development of a five-year Hangum Public Schools strategic plan. It's to provide staffing and support for special education to ensure the district is able to appropriately and adequately address the needs of students, staff, and the community. On the resources required for our first year of District Equity and Inclusion Plan. And then provide the needed personnel support for central office, uh, which includes the addition of a payroll clerk, administrative assistant, perform data and analytics, and provide school committee, social media, and communication in this, uh, community is, is in dire need of. Uh, so those are the, the guiding principles that we've put forth to you and, and look forward to your feedback over the next two weeks and we take this as an action item. John, you want anything, add anything to that at all?
Um, no, Paul, I think, um, I think you did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Sorry.
Carrie?
Yeah?
Perhaps you would just want to make sure that we uh, include the November tenth into the calendar?
Oh, yes, that's a good idea. I was gonna update the committee on that later, but we will be having a joint meeting with the Advisory Committee and the Board of Selectmen um, on November tenth to discuss the um, the current budget. And uh, Dr. Austin and Tom Mayo will be giving a, an update on the uh, financial forecast. So we could, we could add that to.
Great, thank you.
Calendar. Thanks, Carlos. Um, does anyone on the committee have any questions on these um, budget guidelines? Liza?
Yeah. Um, on the first one that says provides for services and supports, and then HTSS in parentheses, necessary to remediate the loss of instructional progress resulting from COVID nineteen. Um, I'd ask the administration to go back and flush that out a little bit, because we may need to remediate. So this is only talking about social emotional supports? And there might be a need to remediate the loss of actual content instructional support for going forward, just considering the remote learning, the shorter, you know, a hundred and seventy days this year versus a hundred and eighty normal. Um, and so it may not just be the social emotional supports that are needed. There may be additional um, instructional progress, programming required. So if you can flesh that out to word it in a different way.
Yeah, thank you for that feedback, Liza. That was actually the intent of that. Uh, it was not, it was actually, that's why I said instructional uh, progress, but I think your point is well taken.
I think there's needs for both areas, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Michelle, did you have something?
I did, yes, thank you. Um, and it, and this may just be a term that I'm just not, it, it may just be a budget term, but I guess I'm just questioning a little bit the developing a budget using a status quo budget with key initiatives added. So that doesn't sound like a status quo budget to me if we're adding additional initiatives. And I just, I don't know, I, I just, I'm concerned that um, that, that we're thinking about the guiding principles for this year being status quo, because it's a, it's a, I mean, it's a ridiculously unusual year, and we also know that it's going to be, you know, the financial um, impact of this virus on the town. But the, it's going to have to be offset in some degree to what we are looking at for budget, but I think, I don't know, I, I'm just urging that as we're putting this budget together, we've got a lot of making up to do to these kids, and it's gonna cost money. And I, I think we have to be clear with our community and with our towns' departments that we are going, I, I think we should at least be asking for what we need next year and a couple of years to follow to try to bring kids back to where they need to be. Um, and try to figure out a way that we can get there. I'm just concerned about putting together like a status quo or a level services budget in a year that we know is not going to be normal, and we're going to need a lot more services for kids. We're gonna need some potentially new facilities. I mean, we've been talking about how short-staffed we are, not just at central office, but in the school buildings as well. So I just, I, I think I'd like to see more than just level services.
Thank you, Michelle. I, I, you know, again, the intent of that, the feedback is excellent. The intent is when we say status quo, we meant, you know, we, we've got to maintain what we have, plus we have to add all these other things. Um, and and, you know, however we say that, it's going to be a budget that is far more robust and does exactly what you're asking for you. Those are the things we need to do. That's what this budget is. So when we said status quo, I meant, we gotta keep up with that, plus we have to do all these other things. That's what the intent of that was.
Yeah, no, that's, that's fair. And I, and I think that's it.
And if I could just interject, that's keeping what we had as of March one, you know, the, the March one counts. I mean, our enrollment is way down. We're not gonna base anything on where we are today. We have to go back to where we were March thirty-first and sort of use that as our jumping off point and all of this other stuff that's going on. You know, as far as, you know, the, the reduction in the, in the enrollment and stuff, that doesn't count. We're not gonna take that into account and say, hey, we need less services because we have fewer kids, or we need less FTEs, or the, uh, you know, we're not gonna do that. We need to, we need to start from where we left off. And, and that's, that's what the, that's what the reference to status quo meant. And then we'll add these other things over, which, um, you know, a lot of that has to do with the the academic model, which isn't necessarily just social emotional, but is also educational um, to make up for those instructional losses.
Yeah, no, that's good. So I, I, yeah, I hear what you're saying. So I think what we're trying to do is develop a budget that will allow us to continue providing the level of education that we have been given to our students prior to this and with enhancements to it so that we can make up for it at the time. So the status quo is more that we are going to continue delivering and the educational services that we always have, and that's going to cost more money.
Yeah, I, I think your point, Michelle, is absolutely well taken, and, and that's our desire here. We, we've had students who've lost a lot of instructional time, and, and uh, we have students who struggle. We need to make sure that we, we give back to that. Uh, and you're right, we're gonna have to rebuild this differently. Um, we're ready to do that. I have absolutely no doubt that Dr. Bo on his team of um, interventionists and that will be ready to do that. Uh, and, and that will be included in the budget.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
Okay, I see Ness has her hand up.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, can Ness.
Okay, sorry, I'm not um, seeing you, but just to add on to what Michelle was just saying, if we are thinking about this long-term, and if we're in the same predicament for, you know, for the foreseeable future, and we have to keep the kids separated six feet or three feet, we may need to consider in our budget um, additional space like we are at St. Jerome, but even additional space for all of the children to be able to get them back more. Um, and are we gonna take that into account in the new budgeting process?
Yeah, I, I think that's a, that's a distinct possibility. We have to be thinking about that. As much as I don't think anybody on this call wants to see uh, the, us talk about, you know, those kind of three to six-foot spaces in, in a year from now. Um, but that could be a reality, and I think we have to prepare for that. Um, so we're gonna have to prepare for multiple scenarios, particularly in the side of, of facilities, uh, to be able to prepare with the best of our ability to, to move in. Uh, we just can't continue as we're doing. Um, and, and we know that. And I want to be clear again on the budget. We recognize what we need to do. We recognize the type of services we need to provide uh, moving forward. And I, I think that's a distinguishing mark on this, on this budget's process, uh, and you can expect uh, lots of discussion around those issues. And then one also plays for what the future looks like, and as much as we can try to read it. I, I think once we do get to February, March, when we're really starting to nail this budget down, I'm hoping we have some more visibility uh, of what that looks like, uh, for sure.
Great, thank you. Libby, you're next.
Uh, yeah, uh, thank you. Uh, so I um, concur with Michelle that um, the word, that, just the word status quo um, was uh, bothersome to me too. It sounds way too much like level services, and we've been um, restricted to level services budgets for way too long, and so are suffering repercussions now because of it. Um, so I don't want to go back to level services, and I thank you for clarifying what you meant by that. So that, that's good. Um, I understand what you're, what you're saying. Um, I sort of feel like I'd rather approach it differently in saying that, um, you know, I mean, we don't even want to go back to where we were, because we had already identified many uh, things that needed to be added to the budget. Um, and like, you know, for example, Fine Arts Director, and there's a um, position at the high school that I don't even think has been um, created again since it was eliminated during the recession, and um, the, just the mere fact that uh, our, we have the highest student-to-teacher ratio of all of our benchmark towns, which just speaks to the need for more uh, teachers. Um, and I, I'd like to see those, that level uh, identified as needs uh, for next year, but then also on top of that, everything else that you've added in here for COVID nineteen mitigation and um, the, the strategic plan, et cetera. Uh, I, um, but I, I, I feel like we're gonna need to make a huge jump in our budget, like to make up for uh, not having uh, fun, fully funded the schools for years in the first place, and now because of COVID nineteen. So, you know, we need to prepare the community for uh, a big jump in our budget, and we need to say, this is what we need. We, we need to do this, and it, this is the time to do it. We can't wait for the market to go up and, or down, or up or down. I mean, we just have to do it. Um, and you know, whether that means um, it's very possibly going to um, require an override, and uh, so we need to prepare um, the, uh, you know, all of our elected officials and the community to uh, be able to talk about an override and what that means um, in, and, and actually talk about it, where, you know, in the past, you mention that word, and everybody holds their nose, and it, it's like taboo. And um, so I, I want to see a document here that sets um, our guiding principles um, being much more aggressive um, and, and, and stating, you know, how, how much this is really important. Um, and I, 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 I just, I would like the language to be more aggressive and to actually uh, list a few more items that are pertinent and have already been identified as such for next year. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Libby. Carlos?
Yeah, so now more than ever, I think it is imperative that we uh, finally address um, the technology uh, piece um, of uh, the capital budget, uh, because we've been for years talking about uh, bringing uh, technology as part of the operating budget. So I'll make sure that we don't forget that, that this is, this is the time to do it, especially now that uh, without technology, we know that we would not have been where we are. So uh, I would love for us to address that this time around. Um, I think the time has come. So if you could just make sure that uh, we, uh, you know, everyone on the Advisory, ACIS, Board of Selectmen um, are fully aware of it, that that is our intent, uh, to someday move um, technology out of the um, capital. Um, obviously, it's a huge chunk of money. It's over four hundred thousand. And that uh, sort of prevents us from doing some uh, capital improvement in our schools. So if that money can be uh, you know, set aside or actually moved on to the operating, then now we have a little more money. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else on the committee? No. Okay, so I just wanted to say, I, I want to, I agree with Libby and with Michelle about moving away from the status quo language. Um, John, your description was, that was really helpful of what you, how you were thinking about it, but we've kind of, as a department and as a town, made the decision to do level service status quo for years and years and years, as the needs, so the budget has been kind of held steady even as the needs increased. And I think we've seen um, during this, now we're in a crisis. Um, it's been really, it's, it's made it more difficult to reopen the schools. So I, I guess I would, I'd love to get rid of that language, because we're not at the status quo the way um, is, at least as, as a town, or, well, as a world, really. Um, it is, that we're not as a status quo as we were last March. Um, so that was one thing. And then the other question I had is, and I, I agree with these the principles with the uh, HTSS and um, the five-year plan and everything. Are we going to start some of that now during this fiscal year? That was my concern is um, for waiting for some of this. I think the, the strategic plan's gonna be very important, as it's gonna drive our budget for the next several years. Um, and then the kids, they need, they need services and supports. Um, and we, we probably already know um, or have a good idea of what those need to be. Um, so is there any intent to, is this saying we're not gonna start those things until, till next year, or are we working on that now, and this will just be a continuation?
No, we are, we're having conversations on that now. Carrie, I think there's, obviously, we, we have to talk about capacity of what we can do right now with the limited staff we have. Um, but things like strategic plan, et cetera, will, will be starting uh, this year and not be waiting till next year. We need to be talking about um, how we support special education, um, and the HTSS academic piece. Absolutely, all those things are beginning now. Um, we just want to prepare the budget, because those are, we go back to the meeting we had, the workshop we had on October, whatever it was that we did that, third, I think. You know, these were the priorities that we all said we're gonna come out of that um, to make sure, pretty good reflection of those priorities. Um, it became the priorities of the budget. Um, but absolutely, we're not waiting to intervene uh, with students, and um, regardless of how difficult it is right now, and, and we, we still have things to do. Uh, and, and so we obviously want to do that, and we're hard on those. So it's a work in progress.
That's great. And I, I just, as you prepare the budget, as we go through the process, I think the way you presented it last year with the tiers and the, the levels of needs of all the different thing, I mean, I, I would think big picture, like what do we need as a district to move forward? Um, and I mean, obviously with these being the priorities, but there may be other things too, so.
And if we recall the budget from a year ago- And if we recall the budget from a year ago, all these things that we're talking about today, we're in that budget. And they were there and, you know, we revisit those and we got to bring those back. And, you know, those are still our priorities. I think it's a needs-based budget. I would say we change it to a needs-based budget that fulfills our mission and vision. And we've a lot of work to do. And I also agree with the process that I don't think, we should not be striving to go back to where we used to be. We had many things that were identified either in my entry report, what people say, I mean, things that we knew already that we needed to improve. And so that has to be the goal as we come out of this, and we will. We're going to have to come out of this stronger and rebuild and not only rebuild, but to build and to attract at a new, at a new way. And we're certainly dedicated to do that. That's one of the reasons why the strategic plan is, why I recommended that now. It's so incredibly important to get parental and to get community input on that to really shape our direction for the next five to 10 years, I think is so critically important right now. Because I think you're right, it's going to cost money. But that money needs to be in a priority places that people think is priority. And it's time and I do feel that, you know, we certainly do have support from the town right now and that needs to continue when we move forward.
Great, thank you. Now, if any members of the public want to have a question or comment on this, again, go to the participants button at the bottom of the screen. And then when the list pops up, right-hand button, I'm right. I see Susie O'Horos hand raised. If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Susie O'Horo, Seven Wander Strive in Hingham. I just wanted to let the committee know, working with a group of parents, supporters of Hingham Public Schools, we started a petition today to really increase awareness around the school committee's budget. And really just through our support, 100% behind getting the schools, everything they need. And we're tired of level services fundings and this is a disruptive moment and we need to go forward with our values in mind and with what we want our schools to look like for the future. And, and so I just wanted to let, you know, anyway, we started the petition today. And even just in the, you know, eight hours or so that it's been circulated on Facebook, it's, we've had 330 individual signatures. So we have 330 individual parents, taxpayers, who are willing to, you know, go to bat for this cause in less than a day. So hopefully, you know, that support will help us all going forward.
Great.
Awesome, Susie. Thank you. That's awesome.
Thank you. Lauren Atchitella?
Hi, Laura Atchitella for Boulder Glen Road. I just wanted to see if you had specific dates for community input. Dr. Austin, you mentioned that those would be important and I know you were reviewing elements of the budget calendar. But could you give all of us on the phone now, specific dates?
That would be the hearing, that would be the hearing date that we have. John, do you have any other dates on there? I think it's just the hearing date.
The hearing date of November 10th?
No, that's not a hearing. That's actually a, that's a budget update for
The selectmen and the advisory committee, so that's not an open meeting?
The tentative date is February 8th for that hearing.
The February 8th is the first date that community input is thought?
No, that's the hearing. I mean, during January, there'll be a couple of school committee meetings as well, you know, and there'll be a budget updates. I mean, so there's the opportunity to talk. You know, the workshops, you know, that's up to the chair whether they'll address, you know, questions or not. But there are a couple of school committee meetings in January as well where the public typically in the past has always put their input in.
One of the things I would add to that, Laura, I would agree that the school committee meetings, where are we going to do those? There'll be several times that we present budget and where we're thinking. Those are all open to the public. You have the ability to speak and ask questions at that time. I would encourage that. They certainly did last year. And we put all those documents online and available to you. So we'll do this in a transparent way that you can see what we're thinking and what it's going to look like.
Yeah, okay, well, go ahead.
So parents are also, are welcome to come to the finance subcommittee meetings too. The next one is December 8th, but we won't have too much to discuss until the administration has a chance to go through all of their needs and kind of put something together for us. So, but all of these meetings are open.
But it's more in January when you'd be seeking parent input.
It's when we put the budget, start to put things together, you can start to look at it.
I think we'll take it at any time, honestly. But yeah, that's when it's, most of the work gets done in January.
Thanks.
Okay, I think, all right, so I think we got all of the community input there. Next is 5.1 communications received by the superintendent.
I would just be, although I'm going to be brief. If our student is here, if our student representative is here that would rather go in front of me so that we don't keep you up like we did last time, but
She is. Carly, we can jump ahead and do
Carly, we're going to let you go first.
Okay. Hi, everyone. So last week, the high school started a new practice called comm classroom. So the passing time between A and B block has been shortened in order to allow students to meditate and take a few deep breaths before going into their second block of the day. And I think for the majority of students, it's been very effective and helpful. And it's pleasing that the school is really taking the time to put effort into relieving the student stress. Last week for Halloween, lots of the students engaged in school spirit by wearing their Halloween costumes on Friday and some even wore them on Zoom, which was funny to see. As for Spanish, lots of the Spanish seniors recently took the CLO by literacy exam, which just tests the proficiency in the language. And that's really important for the high school because we continue to rank within the top 10 schools statewide for the percentage of students graduating with the CLO by literacy stamps on our transcripts. So that's huge. As for the holiday fair, our class officers have been working very actively preparing for this in the upcoming weeks and everything will be virtual this year. So information regarding that will be released shortly. The drama club has decided on a date for their Zoom play, so that will be November 20th and 21st. And tickets are online now, so that should be exciting to see. The soccer team celebrated their senior night last week while also commemorating the passing of Mr. Teague. The volleyball team raised over $1,000 two weeks ago during their dig pink game. And all those profits will be donated to breast cancer research. And the field hockey won their first game back after their two-week-long quarantine today against Duxbury, 3 to 1. And as if everything goes well by the end of the week, most of the teams will have completed their regular season. So playoffs should be starting very shortly, within the next week or two. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Carly. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, thank you, Carly. We really appreciate it.
Of course.
Dr. Austin, if you want to talk
And as I said, I'd be brief and Carly, thank you very much. You're doing a great job of this. Just a quick and just an update and I kind of spoke to it in my brief opening statement. You know, I continue to listen to the parents and hear parents and who are struggling right now with the way that school is structured. And I understand that. My heart goes out to that. And now all I can say is I continue to say, we're all doing the very best we can to offer the very best education to your children possible right now. We're watching metrics and I appreciate communications. We are listening. There's no question we're listening to you. We hear you. We know the struggle is real and we're all working hard to hopefully overcome this entire, I'm going to say the best word I can find, the mess that we're all in. But we will find our way out. So thank you for the communications. That's pretty much it.
Hey, does anyone else, did anyone else receive communications?
Carrie, I did. And I'll leave up to you whether you want me to address now or under 48 hours. We facilities and Capron facilities received a letter from the residence that resides next to the girls' softball field. Bringing to our attention that individuals playing softball there and they found 16 between softball and hardball, regular baseball in the backyard and they frightened as many aware of it. You know, they came to us a few years back because their windows were broken by the balls. Last year, when we wanted to install a digital scoreboard, obviously, we had to go and seek their approval and, you know, buy-in. And we were in favor of the digital scoreboard. And at the time, we also said that we would try our best to do a few things for them, including putting a netting that is pretty similar to the one that we have by the socket field out there. So I think this, it has come to time where we need to really address that because we don't want to, I mean, a couple of things could happen perhaps, you know. One, maybe we could put signs up there, you know, instructing parents to, you know, players to be more careful hitting the ball to their house. And the other thing is the netting. So I would respectfully ask that John continue to pursue that. You know, we had left that perhaps that was something that we could do. So I'm not sure if John would like to say a few words about that, but I would love for us to consider it because that was part of getting them to, you know, be in favor of the digital scoreboard that's pretty close to their house.
Hi, Kels. Yeah, so, I mean, if that's another enhancement the school committee would like to do, I mean, there is the projects field account that could be used for that function. So, you know, I mean, I think that's, it's just a matter of, you know, whether the school committee wants to fund it and, you know, what the source might be. So, you know, we could certainly go forward and get some quotes for it. And, you know, and that's what I would recommend, that source, which is for the, you know, high school field projects enhancement account. I think Sorry, I was getting a little, I was getting a little reverb. Sorry about that. Yeah, I think we had about $80,000 that we allocated for some enhancements last year. We happy to get some quotes and, you know, bring it to the committee so that you can, you know, vote, you know, additional funding to put up the netting.
Yeah, why don't we do that if you wouldn't mind getting some quotes and we'll just add it as an agenda item to a future meeting once we have some more information.
Great, thank you.
No problem.
Great, thanks. Michelle?
Hey, thanks, Carrie. A couple of us had received an email from a community member who actually had some really kind of clever and unique ideas about recruiting for some of the positions that we might still have available for this year. Particularly given that, you know, people aren't running to work in public schools right now, given the public health concerns. So Susan, I think we'll, maybe Libby and I can follow up with you with some of the ideas that were presented and to see if any of them might work. Think about it.
Okay, thank you. Any other communications? No. Okay, unfinished business, 6.1 to consider the Massachusetts Association of School Committee MASC resolutions 6 through 10 and act as appropriate. So just to be clear, for anyone who's on the call and wasn't on last week, the Mass Association of School Committee has their delegate meeting on Saturday. And Carlos has kindly agreed to serve as the Hingham Public Schools delegate. So we are basically empowering him to vote for or against these different resolutions. These aren't resolutions that we're adopting here in Hingham. We're just, he's going to the delegate meeting and he'll just speak for us there. So Carlos, do you want to start with number six?
Sure. And by the way, I attended a meeting on Saturday, a mock meeting. And so we could sort of like test the system to vote on the resolution, so.
Great.
It was a great exercise. All right, so we are going to address now number six. That has to do with the retention of medical revenue. And as I was doing the last meeting, I will read only the first line and then I'll go to the, therefore be resolved. Whereas the Affordable Care Act expanded access for healthcare for millions of Americans, including thousands of Massachusetts family who have been without health insurance. Therefore, be resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committee urges the general court to require that 100% of Medicare reimbursements to cities and towns be provided in full amount to be, to the public schools of each municipality through a school district revolving account to underwrite the cost of providing inadequate education. With that, I'll make a motion that we approve this resolution. That we vote in favor of this resolution.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, is there any discussion on this one? No? Okay. Michelle?
Hi.
Hi.
John?
John?
And Ness?
Ness?
Hi.
Carlos?
Hi.
Libby?
Hi.
Isa?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well.
Resolution number seven deals with directing fund to private schools. So it is attempts by US DO to direct fundings to private schools. Whereas a recently advisory issued by the United States Secretary of Education has inappropriately interpreted language in the recent enacted COVID-19 relief legislation to benefit private schools disproportionately in the distribution of federal funding for economically disadvantaged students. Therefore, be resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committee petitioned the Attorney General of Massachusetts to review all recommended and recommended to the Executive Office of Education and the Massachusetts Department of Elementary Education to review the formal language of such a statute that determines the distribution of federal fundings to benefit economically disadvantaged students. And further, that the Attorney General provide legal guidance to state agencies in Massachusetts to implement such formulas based on the actual language and legislative intent of the statute. Should that be in variance with any advisory issued by the United States Secretary of Education. With that, I'll make a motion that we vote in favor of resolution number seven.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion on this one? My question on this is, didn't the strike, did the court strike that guidance down from the US Department of Education? Like, is this still relevant?
I know it was a huge controversy when this came about. Because, you know, obviously, the Secretary of Education took a lot of heat for this. I'm not sure if there was any outcome. I don't think they did because otherwise there wouldn't be addressing now, you know what I mean?
Right. Okay.
Carrie, if I could, hi, so the Title I is a pretty firm regulation relative to how money is dispersed to kids at risk. Where the issue came up was under the new funding for COVID relief. And all of our grants, all of our grants this time around, actually, we had to make private school allocations based on enrollment rather than eligibility as a free and reduced lunch student, which is typically how we do the allocation awards on our federal grants for Title I, Title II, Title IV. And at the time, we all raised, as administrators, the same concern around the proportion of funding going to private schools under this protection. And that's really where the CARES money came from relative to all the private schools. So we went through the whole process, did the allocation. And then about a, maybe two or three weeks ago now, they did actually overturn the Secretary de Vos's application of the funding formula under the CARES Act. However, 80% of the districts in Massachusetts had already done their funding and actually allocated the money already. So what the state ended up saying was, if you've already done it, then keep it. But if you've not done it, go back to the Title I formula for allocation. So I think relative to the public funds going to public school students, I think it's wise for the committee to approve. But to your point, they did fix the resolution. This, I think the way this is worded would be to have the Attorney General work to sort of establish the legal precedent of allocation of federal to sort of establish the legal precedent of allocation of federal funds to non-public school students.
Great. Yeah, I think that's helpful. Thank you. Okay, and if there's any other, I don't see any other discussion, so we can vote on this. Michelle?
I am an aye.
Jen? Vanessa?
Aye.
Aye.
Carlos?
Aye.
Libby?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, and thank you again for that explanation. Next one, number seven? Oh, sorry. Yep.
All right, resolution number eight deals with the membership of a school committee member on the Board of the Elementary and Secondary Education. Whereas the Massachusetts Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, BES, is established to oversee and implement policy related to public education. Therefore, it be resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committee submit to the General Corps proposed legislation that the Massachusetts General Law Chapter 15, Section 1E, be reviewed as follow, revised as follow. Section 1E. There shall be the Department of, the Department, in the Department, a Board of Elementary and Secondary Education in this chapter called the Board, which shall consist of the Chairman of the Student Advisory Council, established under this, this section, the Secretary of Education, in this chapter called the Secretary of the Zegony, and nine members appointed by the Governor. The nine members appointed by the Governor shall consist of one representative of a labor organization selected by the Governor from a list of three nominees provided by the Massachusetts State Labor Council, AFL-CIO, one representative from the business or industry selected by the Governor with a demonstrated commitment to education, one representative of a parent of a school children selected by the Governor from a list of three nominees provided by the Massachusetts Parent Teachers Association, one representative from the School Committee from a list of three nominees provided by the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, and five additional members. I move that we approve this resolution number eight.
Thank you, Carlos. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Libby. Any discussion with this one? Seeing none? Oh, sorry.
No, that's good. I was going to just say, although school committee members are not professional educators, so I, you know, can understand why they hadn't been included in the past. I do think that, given the current situation that we find ourselves in, that some representation from school committee would be appropriate to have on these boards just to get, you know, a broader understanding of the needs of the, of sort of schools as a, as a community touchstone, you know. So anyway, so that's sort of my thought on that.
Yeah, and after watching some of these meetings, I would agree with you. That perspective would be helpful. It seems to be lacking. Hey, anyone else? Okay, we can vote on this. Michelle?
I'm an aye.
Jen? Vanessa?
Aye.
Carlos?
Aye.
Libby?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Okay, number nine?
Resolution number nine, providing equity for sexual orientation for LGBTQ+ students, teachers, and staff. Whereas gender identity is not listed as a, as a protected class in federal laws. Therefore, be resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committee file legislation and petition our federal legislative delegation to also file legislation which would have effect of adding sexual orientation and gender identity to a list of protected classes in order to provide equity and support to our LGBTQ+ students, teachers, and staff in petition our legislative delegation.
Okay.
We approve this one as well, resolution number nine.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Michelle. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none. Michelle?
Aye.
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Aye.
Vanessa?
Aye.
Carlos?
Aye.
Libby?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Okay, final line, number 10.
Number 10 is relative to the monitoring of attendance of students during the pandemic. Whereas districts are required to have special but comprehensive plans for educating students during the pandemic crisis. Therefore, be resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, School Committees advocate for legislation and regulation that protect the rights of parents to withhold their children from school for reasons of their health status or health risk. And further, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees advocate for regulations that hold districts accountable for their attendance of students provided appropriate, provide appropriate exceptions for students who experience or require extended absences from school due to health-related issues or concerns due to COVID-19 epidemic. And further, that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees petition the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education to waive all accountability requirements regarding attendance for the 2020, 2021 school year. And that such regulations exempt districts from sanctions status on the basis of attendance when such absences are related to the public health crisis included in COVID-19. I move that we approve resolution number 10. That we vote in favor of number 10.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Liza. I was actually hoping the administration could weigh in on this one.
I was just gonna ask that.
I have questions.
Yeah, because, sorry, I was wondering, I was wondering that as well. Because particularly, I worry about, like, sort of, like, losing students. Like, you know, and I think perhaps not such an issue in Hingham, although we would not be immune to it. But there are districts, you know, where they're saying, you know, I think it was in Arizona, there was a district that, you know, 50,000 students or in the state have just fallen through the cracks. Nobody knows where they are, right? They haven't shown up at school and they, they don't know where they are. So that's where I'm a little, a few questions around this. Like, would you, would the administration agree that we should be waiving accountability requirements? Or thoughts on that?
I don't know if I'd be fair to give you an answer tonight because I haven't really had much chance to mull that over. And, you know, I'd like to have a little time before I did that, if you want to. I don't know if you want to table that and do it another night, but I, I would really like a little more time.
Yeah, we have to, the meeting's on Saturday, so we have to decide one way or another on this tonight.
Yeah.
Can I, I have a question about what it, do they, and it has to do with the first two bullet points. I feel like they contradict each other. Maybe I'm not reading it right. But the first one says that the MASC advocate for regulations that hold districts accountable for the attendance of students. But then the second one says that the MASC petitioned to waive all accountability requirements regarding attendance. I'm confused.
I mean, I, I read that, I, I don't know. I mean, I read that, Libby, as, you know, you have to, yeah, we're going to be accountable. We know we have to be accountable for every student. But the circumstances are different and we have to be flexible with certain students. That's the way I read that, which I have no problem doing. You know, circumstances are different for every family right now. They're impacted in different ways. And so, you know, we have to be flexible. That's the way I read it. I don't know if, well, Amy, I see you're shaking your head from your desk, but I was thinking through that.
Dr. Lubin, are you have your hand up?
Yes, hi. What this is getting at is, under the Massachusetts accountability model, we have a provision relative to chronic absenteeism. Chronic absenteeism is defined as being absent for 10% or more of a calendar, of a school year. So typically, if a student is, it's actually relative to enrollment. So if the kid's only enrolled for 90 days, if they're absent nine days, they're chronically absent. If it's 170, with the 170-day calendar, what this is getting at is, we know, given the health situation in the Commonwealth, that kids are going to be absent for health-related incidents or might be ill beyond the 10% mark. And so if the state maintains the current trajectory with maintaining accountability, administering MCAS this spring, we're under all the same accountability provisions. And so I think what the, what the statement is saying is, we recognize that attendance is important. And we're not, I think the resolution is saying, no one's saying it's not important, but relative to accountability, if there could be an exception made for sort of COVID-related, at least how I'm reading it, is because accountability, if you're absent for 17 days, regardless of the reason, you're chronically absent and your school actually gets a ding against it. Which is why, remember, two years, it would have been two years ago now, because they didn't have accountability this fall. But last year, our principals made a big push on, on school attendance for exactly that reason. Several of our schools went down in accountability level or were cited relative to chronic absenteeism. And that is an ongoing issue relative to families maybe taking vacations or sort of being out for extended periods of time. If you're absent more than 10% of what you're enrolled, you're considered chronically absent. So just to give context to the accountability piece, because right now, the state is moving forward with MCAS in the spring and accountability measures for next fall. I, now that I've had a couple of seconds to review that part, I concur with, with Dr. Lubin. Really what that's doing is, it's a whole harmless year for us in the accountability measure as far as the attendance report itself. But it doesn't remove our responsibility for ensuring we know where, what our students are and that we, we monitor that closely. So I would agree with that. I don't have any problems with resolution.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions?
What is the sanction status? What does that mean? It's in the third bullet.
I think that's that accountability measure. That's that accountability where we would get the ding, as he was just talking about, Libby, so that we would have the whole harmless year. We would not be considered a, a school of concern for them in regards to enrollment or attendance, which is that way, not enrollment, but attendance. But that's that whole harmless piece.
Okay, great. Thank you both. So we can take a vote now? Michelle?
Aye.
Jen? Sorry, I can't hear you, Jen. Okay, there we go.
Aye.
Carlos?
Aye.
Libby?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Thank you, everyone. And Carlos, thank you for representing us on Saturday.
Pleasure.
That should be, so next, we have 7.1 to consider homeschool application.
Thank you. That's in your packet, as, as we've done before. There's one tonight, and I recommend after a review of that, that you approve that request.
Okay, someone like to make a motion?
I move that we approve the homeschool application of a student, yes, grade four for fiscal year 2021.
Thank you, Carlos. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thanks, Libby.
Libby.
Michelle?
Michelle? I, I, I.
Jen?
Aye.
Vanessa?
Aye.
Carlos?
Aye.
Libby?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Next is 7.2 to receive the Fall 2020 High School Coaching Recommendations.
Thank you. That's in your packet tonight. As always, you are provided every year with the, the coaches that are appointed by the high school department and principal. So that's been provided for your, that's the announcements.
Great.
There's no action required.
Okay, thank you. Next is-
Sorry.
Sorry.
Sorry. Carrie, can I ask you a question? It's kind of related to the coaching recommendations, but I, it just popped up the other day. I was thinking about this. Do, on the, uh, clubs, the clubs and activities at the, I guess, high school and middle school, do, have we, do we know which ones are, are they all being offered this year? Have like, the teachers or staff members doing them, signed their contracts? I was wondering about that. I don't think we-
We actually just looked at that list the other day. Provide a list of what we are going to be doing this year. The majority is, I would say that Mr. Swanson's on the line too, but done a phenomenal job of trying, trying to keep as much as possible in a, in a normal world that we can do, and we can do that remotely. And so we're just looking at that list and approved all the stipends for the year based upon that list. So I don't know, Rick, do you want anything to add? Just want, sorry.
No, thanks, Paul. That, that's right. Just a small handful of clubs are kind of on hiatus this year for the moment, but the overwhelming majority of them have found ways to continue meeting and to stay active, you know, just changing the way they're meeting and finding new activities. But it's been good and encouraging to see the way that almost all of our clubs have picked right up where they left off and are moving forward. And so stipends for those advisors should be in effect in almost every case.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. I was just, I was hoping that most of the clubs and we're continuing because I know that is an important part of the overall experience for the students.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Next one is 7.3 to receive notification of a number of appointments. That's good news, given the staffing challenges.
Yeah, just, just quickly, I won't go through each one of those. But obviously, some of the things, we've heard some great ideas from people about recruiting, et cetera, from the past, and we've employed some of those. I know that Mr. Swanson actually did a mass emailing to a, a, a more recent class that graduated, maybe five years ago, Mr. Swanson. And we admitted quite a few paras out of that. And so that's really important, and so that's, that's good news for us. We're trying, we're still down. We obviously are looking for new people and continually interviewing and hopefully do, to get more people on board soon.
That's great. 7.4 is to receive the notification of a number of resignations for the 2020, 2021 school year.
Yeah, just that list looks fairly wrong. I want to say we really have been, you know, part of our catch-up is not getting all those on the previous announcements on a monthly basis. So a lot of those go back to late, late summer, early fall. And so that is a pretty comprehensive list, is up to date now. But we're certainly catching up and trying to, we're catching up, we're catching up. So those are all the, we wish them all well as they move on.
Great, yes. All right, 7.5 is to receive the notification of several retirements. Thank you for your service to the Hingham Public Schools. Next is eight subcommittee and project reports. So we can go through these. Michelle, do you want to start?
Yes, I will. Thank you. I attended the CPAC meeting last Tuesday. It was a good meeting. Dr. Vanessa was there and she presented some updates to CPAC and answered some questions. Dr. Vanessa had mentioned that she'll be recruiting for the task force, for her task force shortly. It was a good discussion. And then following that CPAC discussion, we had a special ed subcommittee meeting the next day. Dr. Vanessa also attended there. And she gave us, the committee, a good overview of the, gave us a good update on how services are being delivered. And she gave us a good staffing update. So we had a great meeting, hearing about the particular challenges that are vast in special education this year. And we talked about what types of positions might be, might be needed to help continue ensuring that we're delivering all the services that we need to the special ed community. So some of that will be coming up in budget discussion. So some of that will be coming up into budget discussions for next year. But there may be some other things that we talk about at our finance meeting next week as well. So there's lots to come on that. We, Dr. Venice was also going to follow up, because there were some questions from the community about what kids were doing during periods that they weren't in class, but were waiting, and, and were waiting for services. And I think it was particularly at the middle school. And they were hoping that there could, that could be time that was used to provide the kids with some engagement activities, like socially, academically, just a time versus them just sort of sitting there, you know, looking at school books. Maybe it was some opportunities for kids to talk with each other or do some activities and build some more community for them. So Dr. Venice was going to look into that. On, for Thursday, getting my days confused, Dr. Jamie and I attended a meeting with the Metco headquarters team and some of the other superintendents and assistant superintendents around the Commonwealth as we are trying to come up with a, a vision, a shared vision statement for Metco to deliver, on, on how we're going to deliver anti-racist curriculums. So we're having meetings each Thursday morning for about an hour, hour and a half to develop the vision, come up with a learning series, configure the continuum of practice. And then there's a retreat that's going to be planned, I believe, for the assistant, the superintendents and assistant superintendents around delivering this curriculum, curriculum model. So really, really great work that they are having. And then, this Thursday night, Dr. Austin is hosting a coffee with Metco families that Ness and I are attending and Carol's Perez as well.
Great, thank you. Jen, you have anything? Looks, looks like no. Okay, Ness, do you have anything?
Yes, I'm gonna leave my video off so you don't get dizzy. But update on East, we had a school council meeting last Wednesday, October 28th. We talked about some of the things going well and some of the issues that people are facing, technology being the biggest obstacle in getting substitute teachers. They are coming up with an action plan on improvements and what that might look like this year. Typically, in the past, they've looked to MCAS results to figure out how to move forward with their improvement plan. But given we didn't have MCAS last year, trying to figure out how they're gonna assess that this year. The next meeting is December 2nd. H E F, they have, their next meeting will be on December 2nd. They're going to be going through all their grants that they've received. Just wanted to remind everyone that the application process has now commenced. It started, it opened yesterday and the due date is November 20th. And then, as far as finance goes, we had our meeting with the full participation of the school committee on October 21st. We got an overview of the closeout of fiscal year 20. John gave us an update on COVID-19 impact to date. The district has submitted two invoices for reimbursement from the CARES Act, one for $687,000 and the other one for $701,000. We also had a review of the revolving accounts and the impact of programs that are not running this year. And our next meeting is December 8th at 1 o'clock. And then finally, just wanted to give an update on the Equity and Inclusion Task Force. Dr. Jamie is setting up meetings with the PTOs currently to discuss the district's initiative and get feedback from the community. So far, we have three meetings set up. Hingham High School will be on November 4th at 7:00 PM. South is November 6th at 9:15 AM. And PRS is November 12th at 9:00 AM. And that's all I have.
Great. And, and is CPAC involved in this too? In, in addition to the PTOs?
Yes, they are. We're working on a date. Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you. Ness, do you want to talk about the, oh, sorry, Michelle?
Nope, that's okay. Do you want to finish up with Ness, because I forgot something. Sorry.
Okay, yeah. Ness, do you want to talk about the warrants now?
Yeah, there was just two warrants that are in your package that I've signed in the last week. So those are just related to normal payroll and other expenses happening.
Great, thanks so much. Michelle?
Sorry, thank you. I knew there was something else I am remiss, was remiss in reporting that I did attend the Hingham High School Council Meeting. I can't believe I forgot that, because I've been desperate to be on that school, to be the liaison for that council for three years now. So I finally got one. So we had our first meeting of the year on the 21st. It was a great meeting. Principal Rick Swanson was, went over the school improvement plan. And this year is, as added, which I thought was great, it is a provision, as part of the school improvement plan, it is a safety for the school. And not just physical safety, but social and emotional safety and wellbeing for students. And I will commend Rick, because he gave a great, sorry, Mr. Swanson. He had us do a great exercise where each of us answered some questions about what are, when was it, when was the time you felt safe at Hingham Schools? Or at Hingham Public Schools, was there a time that you didn't feel safe at Hingham Public Schools? And what sort of does safety in schools mean to you? And it was very powerful. There's one moment that was particularly powerful, because one student on the answer to a time that you didn't feel safe at Hingham Public Schools, and he had replied that he never had had a time that he did feel safe in Hingham. He didn't say the schools necessarily, but he just said, it, it, overall, in the town, which of course would include the, the, the schools. And it was really powerful and vulnerable that he put it out there, but it was really eye-opening. And, and the council did a great job just sort of pausing in the work and just addressing that. And, and, you know, and it made us all realize that that work is really important. So I know Rick is committed to it at the high school, as we are at all of our schools. But I just wanted to share that, because it was very powerful. And, and I think there's going to be some really great work coming out of the high school in that this year.
Great, thank you. Carlos, do you have anything?
Am I, okay. PRS met on the 19th. I actually could not attend that meeting. But they began to address the new school improvement plan. Their next meeting is actually November 9th, and I do intend to be there. Capro and Facilities held our first meeting last week on the 27th. And I want to thank Ness and Jen for, you know, being part of that and contributing to a great meeting. It was very productive. John Ferris updated us on several items, including the SOI for the Windows at Plymouth River. As you may have heard already, for the first time, we had a drone drive-by or fly-by. The MSBA actually sent in, you know, inspectors to, you know, via drone to fly around Plymouth River and take a look at the, at the windows. So that's looking good. We are optimistic about it, that, you know, perhaps we will be invited to apply. You know, the great thing about that is that we already have a million dollars set aside that was part of the mitigation for the vehicle development. So that's looking good. We also received an update on the recently fostered school building committee meeting that they held. You know, it's my understanding is that they are making progress and getting ready to do a feasibility study. John, if I do misspeak on that, please correct me.
Yeah, that's correct, Carlos. Yeah, we'll be on the December board meeting with the MSBA.
Great, thank you. And we went over the capital expenditures for 2020. The $975,000 that was allocated was spent and, you know, projects was done. And John has provided capital outlay with, you know, a copy of that. And we also discussed the fiscal year 2021, where we got, we allocated $1.3 million. Some of the items there are on hold due to COVID-19. And, you know, as we are preparing for the new fiscal year, capital budget, some of the items will have to be reconciled, because we didn't, one, didn't have the manpower to get the job done. Or perhaps, also, it did not make any sense while we are actually in the midst of a crisis. So that's pretty much what it is. Jen, Ness, did I forget anything?
Okay, thank you, Carlos. Libby?
Yeah, so the Community Outreach Subcommittee will meet on Wednesday at 11 o'clock. And amongst other things, we'll be preparing for the two coffees that we have scheduled coming up. The first one is this Friday, November 6th at 9:00 AM. And the second one is next Thursday, November 12th at 7:00 PM. And that information is on the the Hingham Public Schools webpage, I'm sorry, Facebook page and the PTOs and the principals have sent out the, um, the zoom information for those coffees.
Thank you. Liza?
I attended the middle school school council meeting on Monday, October 26th. And we, we talked a lot about the reopening of schools and the impact on the middle school. And we were able to share some of the challenges that they face, as well as the, the positive work that the staff has been doing. And the, the challenges are the kids switching between, you know, remote students and then coming in for hybrid classing, classes. And then we had some parents speak up about some of the things they were seeing. And then I was able to share what things we've been facing. And then the teen librarian from the Hingham Public Library is the community member on the committee, which is really great for a new perspective on things there. So that was good. For salary negotiations, we'll cover that later. But I can tell you, we've been busy with negotiations with Unit B of the HEA, which are the paraprofessionals, and have been talking with them about a memorandum of agreement for the reopening of schools. We've been talking with the Unit A of the HEA about updates to the current MOA, and those discussions continue. And then we'll be negotiating collective bargaining agreements with the custodians, administrative assistants, and bus drivers. So we have time blocked out of our schedule for the next eight weeks, hoping to get that done. The meetings will be posted once we schedule something. And for the master plan committee, we're taking a little longer than we thought to get a draft out. But now, the next, the public presentation is now scheduled for December 16th. So.
Great, thank you so much. So I have policy. Our subcommittee met last week to finish going over Section I, which is instruction of the policy manual, and to review Section D, which is the fiscal management policies. Dr. Austin's going to seek input from the appropriate staff. And we have a meeting with the MAS C Field Director on November 10th at 9:30 AM to work through those sections. We also, we as a full committee have reviewed Section J, which is students, two times. And it's been posted on our website for a few months for community feedback. Dr. Austin has asked the teachers' union to provide any feedback they have on those policies. I'd like to bring that Section J forward to the full committee for a final vote at our next meeting. A forecast meeting last week, Dr. Austin, Mr. Ferris, Michelle and I met with the Town Forecast Group. These are the monthly meetings that we agreed to by all three boards, the school committee, the Board of Selectmen, and the advisory committee as part of the financial management plan we agreed on last June. And so coming out of the meeting, there's some good news and there's some challenges. The good news is, the town is doing relatively well financially so far. Meals taxes were down, as was investment income. But the state aid is level instead of the 20% cut we were anticipating. So that was, that was good news. A big challenge we discussed in, as far as the school department goes, is the staffing infrastructure. Our, I mean, it's not a secret to anyone on the committee, we've run very lean for, for a long time. And that made the reopening of schools particularly challenging. Is, it's, I think a crisis kind of highlights where, areas where you can, we can improve. So I included in your packets a report that Dr. Austin had prepared during his entry period for comparing our school staffing as compared to our 20 benchmark towns. And I mean, it probably looks very different after this year, because COVID definitely disrupted everything. But it's good historical data for us to, just to see and keep in mind as we make some choices coming into budget season. We are going to have a joint meeting on November 10th at 7:00 PM with the advisory committee and the Board of Selectmen, and then the seven of us, if we can, if everyone can make it. And Dr. Austin and Tom Mayo will give an update on the financial picture of the town and the school department. And hopefully, we can, can, can continue these conversations. I don't know if Dr. Austin or John or Michelle have anything they want to add.
I've heard it.
It was good. Yeah, I mean, it was, yeah. Prom, promising, promising news, though, in a, in otherwise, what could be, what could have been very bleak, so.
Right. Yeah, definitely. And then finally, just the all-town PTO meetings. I sent her on the schedule and then I put it into a sheet. So if, if anyone wants to attend these meetings and hasn't signed up already, if you could just put your name on there and just make sure we have some school committee representation at all these meetings.
Carrie? Yep. Could I make a, a request on the, the, the data that Paul shared of doing an analysis was really excellent. But there were two other areas that I thought would be informative, and they may not be included in what Desi provides for the data. But I think for comparing to our benchmark communities, if we could get a slide on the kindergarten, full-day kindergarten, and how different towns fund their kindergarten, whether it's tuition, whether it's fully public-paid, whether it's by lottery, you know, that, those type of things. Because that's something that is a dilemma for us. Sort of COVID has prevented, presented a crisis to us of not getting the tuition for full-day kindergarten this year, but still providing more of a program. And we're one of the few communities in the state that does not fund full-day kindergarten by the town. And then the other item would be our health insurance contributions, comparing them to our benchmark communities. Because, you know, for a long, long time, Hingham has been funding 50% contribution. And other towns have provided more. Other towns are trending toward the 50% share. But I think that would be relevant information to be able to put all of the data into context. So, but otherwise, it was a really excellent presentation. I really enjoyed seeing it in the graph forms. So thank you for preparing that and sharing it.
That's great. Yeah, thank you, Liza. So we've covered all-town PTO. Anyone have anything for 48 hours? Okay, saying nothing. I'll take a motion to adjourn to executive session.
I will make a motion to adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session for the purposes of approving minutes of the executive session on October 19th, 2020, and discussing strategy related to collective bargaining negotiations with HEA Unit A and B, the public discussion of which may be detrimental to the committee's bargaining position.
I'll second. Thank you.
Roll call, Michelle?
Aye.
Jen? Sorry, I can't hear you, Jen. It needs to be audible, but it, it's fine. I think It needs to be audible, but it's fine. I think if the rest of us can do it, we have a, we have enough people on here. Ness?
Aye.
Carlos?
Aye.
Libby?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Okay, thank you, everyone. Want to take five minutes and then jump on? All right, thank you. And thanks for everyone who tuned in.